I would like to call the regular voting today, Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, at four.
Madam Chair, at this point, I'd like to ask her, in addition to the board of commissioners who we did today, I would request a hand count, tabulator number two, not certification, but which is part of the audit process. This has an extremely high rate of rejection, standard of one out of 500, and for the one forty or so, we have a thirty-five percent rejection rate.
And now, we're at the part where you can press your comments. Please do that all the time, just three minutes.
Thank you, David. Somehow, Chairman, this Senate Republican Party, let me say appreciation to all the board of election workers, co-workers, co-watchers. We had a good election. We had a, I've heard a lot of hard work we did to help to put the board of election here. Long hours. And just thanks to the tabulator two, I did do full observing that tabulator two and observed the rapid, the large number of misfeeds. A tabulator two had carried out three in early voting. Don't know how that affected the election results in any way, but it did affect the voters that went up there. Maybe they thought it was their fault. When they go in there, they put the ballot in and it kept misfeeding it. As I watched, there was no rhyme or reason to why the misfeed occurred as far as how they put the ballot in. I even observed one gentleman who folded his ballot, unfolded it, walked over tabulator two, put it in, went right. Other people were doing it as best they could and it kept rejecting it. Tabulator one had some problems, but not near the trouble of tabulator two did. So, as a board member has mentioned here, way out of compliance with the EAC standards of one out of five hundred misfeeds. And so, I asked that the board investigate before we ever use that tabulator again in another election. What's wrong with it? Why does it keep misfeeding? And does the misfeed affect the vote total in any way?
I mean, and I just wanted to echo that, that that was observed, in fact, within several minutes. The first poll watcher there did report a large number. She wrote down the time, every single time. It was, she read something every two minutes. There was so much that she actually stopped to be exact of how much the misfeed occurred. And just for the purpose of language, they weren't rejected, they were taken, the ballots were taken in the scanner, but they were misfed or multiple feeds that violated the EAC standards. When you look on the tabulator, you see a sticker, I observe, that says PAC, and there's like a certification number. And so, we want to make sure that this, that our equipment is compliant with that. If it's not, which this does violate it, just ensure that the count is accurate, as Jill said, not for any, you know, certification purposes. Although, if there were such an issue, that would be for the board to deal with. But just to see what was going on and why. Sometimes, if we did observe, sometimes I got this big report that that voter ended up after multiple attempts going to the other tabulator to do that. And there's no reason that a ballot, presumably, that other ballots are coming from that same B and B, but this ballot cannot be taken in this tabulator and they have to go to a different one. And so, that causes distrust in the voters. And so, I also think that a hand count of tabulator two would be good.
I'd just like to say thank you so very much. You, as board members, responded to the concerns prior to the election. You dealt with them. There are still a few things, and I know you're aware that there are a few things, but I think one thing is clear. Sunday voting, there should never be another argument ever that there's anything wrong with Sunday voting, if not our fact. But there'll be two of them the next time. That was such a wonderful experience. I brought people in to vote and just sat and just smiled as I observed all of those folks and people in wheelchairs, people on walkers, you know, people for whom it was very difficult to cast their ballot that they were coming in to do it. So, that was just a wonderful thing to see. And we're very proud of this facility. But as a former member of the convention and one who always supported whatever you requested, I think it's time to kind of look and see what else is needed and put that in place over this period of time. Because I think you've got a willing commission that would, because this went so well, I think the commission would be in support of whatever. And the other thing is the...
Madam Chair, this is Gillan, the head of the House Office, but how would this fit in with the procedure of the Secretary of State? This is one who have a follow-up with regard to the post-election presidential office.
That one takes place starting in Friday. We have until Tuesday, but we're very happy to take more than eight.
And I don't mind doing this, but I know this is competition. And this comes first, for my, and so, I mean, you're going to have this out by this Friday. We're here from the state. It's coming pretty soon. And then, we have a couple of days to do it. And so, you think before Friday, we can count those six thousand votes?
I'm not asking to do that.
I just got a hot question.
No. I agree with you. The state comes first when you handle the state files.
And so, why don't I take that tag? Can we ask you to pick that tag? I mean, I look, I don't mind. I really don't. I don't, you know, because, you know, I believe in assistance, one thousand percent. However, we do have some obligations that are coming up Friday, and I don't think we have the manpower and staff to do both at the same time. However, I'm doing it later that time. And I imagine one of the time later. Well, in the next week or so.
Oh, Madam Chair, I think something raised is also a larger issue with regard to the mechanical box coming in of tabulator two there. And we need those machines to have five cycles. If there was a problem with that one, I'm most interested in also finding out what that is, whether that's something that we need to repair, whether we need to replace that with another machine wire for the next time it goes into service. I think those are really most pressing issues.
Is it possible to do both at the same time? Would that be easier on staff or if we find out what we have to do from the state? Yeah, just include that.
That would probably, it would probably be a much larger tabulator than, you know, ones that don't get picked.
Correct. I was just trying to...
That thing we do, we pack them all together, we take first, and you got that.
Well, I'm just saying that if we just get it all done on a day at one time, we don't have to break that thing, you know? I know it's a tabulator. I don't know. It's just an offer.
That would be easy.
Excuse me?
That would be easy. We don't know exactly what size, how old it could be, normally, two or three tabulators, a couple of lapses in that is.
Right.
And that could be done immediately or after day. So, in the rest of the day, you need one tabulator. Probably.
Oh.
Based on, what it could be on that.
Do you mind having some sort of motion that allows us to have the expression of the staff and put a deadline, something like that?
I would say, what you're saying is, just maybe a deadline to have it done, not necessarily.
Right. I mean, what I'm saying is, I want to be able to use that day. If it's feasible, but if not, we'd have done within another week or so. That's all I'm saying. I want to give, I want to give him the special, that's all I'm asking. Allow him to be able to do it at the same time the state is being done, or within a week.
I'm going to, just for clarity, what I'd like to do is talk with him, to say the, this, and count tabulator two will be done after the state audit is completed. And within a week of that completion.
You set that note up.
Absolutely.
I'll call a question.
And, Tom, please. All opposed? So, that would be a hand count of tabulator two, if feasible, the same day with the state, but not within one week.
Correct.
All right, now, we come to the business of certification of the November fifth election.
Madam Chairman, I knew certified election.
Certainly.
Thank you. So, the November fifth election has been certified by the board of elections. And probably is in staff reports. You have a staff report on here.
The active voters for November the 12th, 2024 are 108,569 voters. Inactive are 9,774 voters. For a combined figure of 118,343 voters. The DDS registrations are 3,315 voters. Online registrations are 1,127 voters. Pending voters are 467. That concludes the voter registration numbers.
Madam Chair, I'd like to... I appreciate all the technology that we have available here.
All right. There, I know, we go for all the elections in the line. My huge thank you to the staff of the government, you know, the full-time and the part-time, the super rate staff, the coworkers, you know, very good job. We have one of the smoothest elections we had in the past, which presidential election, you know, you feel like it shouldn't be that simple, but it did. I'm not complaining. I received voicemail about you, and I shared it with the staff and board members. And then, I got it sent back to me from Keith Mott, who was sharing it with me and the mayor and Chris Moore and Newmore. And I just want to play it for y'all.
Hi there. I hope this is the right side of the office of the mayor to call. My name is Taylor Green, and I wanted to leave a very thankful remark. When I went to early voting yesterday, I went to the location at the Omar, and I wanted to say a very heartfelt thank you to not only the many coworkers, but the people who did their training. I am autistic and I struggle a lot at my voting. It was a very difficult experience for me to get out and do it, but every single coworker there was incredibly kind and helpful and accommodating and everything, one of the support team, and helped me in a way that I had not really experienced in public in a very long time. And so, I wanted to say thank you so much to the coworkers yesterday at the Omar, which I served in. And to all of the folks in the local government there, they came in and helped, who clearly gave them really real good training on how to support and assist difficult voters. So, thank you so much. If you need anything, okay, my name is Taylor Green. I live here. Can you send that my number?
We don't need that part. That's super.
That speaks to the fact that this process is active and it's working in the public, personally.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Gill and all we've got. I hear that somebody called my attention to accessibility issues that a couple of our warrior precincts, I guess, told about it. So, one was a concern, there seemed to be not a ramp, but a step, that I sell a map at church, which would make it difficult for wheelchair users. I went over there yesterday, and then, I realized that I had absolutely no idea which building was going to be actually door in, and that could make a difference. But if we could check on that, make sure wheelchair users put it in, I appreciate that. The other one is on Harley Bridge Road, making evangelical church. And this is not something we did. I don't know who made the decision there to put the handicap designated parking places where they are, but they are a considerable distance from the door. I would say they're probably outside election area distance. And so, there are other places where somebody could park, but my understanding is the whole election day, that wasn't designated. I think that's probably a fine location, but we need to do something about designating a space on election day. Make sure that somebody who's pushing, you know, propelling themselves along with a wheelchair, is able to minimize the business by any problem.
Every four weeks, you know, weeks, the main street of ADA, there is a handicap, like a wheelchair accessible way, and it's not always the shortest way. So, we will look at those and see if we can improve them enough. We'll do an inspect on there.
Sure.
I have a time to say a couple. First of all, the location on Riverside Drive, the sign there, I'm not real fond of that location, DeGrat and Bluegrass is terrible. Can you see how many moved in there? I was really maybe abusing that and a beautiful place, that place is on Riverside Drive, you know, compared to... I mean, we have there, it's hard to get in and out of there, right? And you're going up a hill and down a hill, it's just a mile. Reach out and see if we can start safer. If you don't mind, I want to make a comment about the last two cars. Some of us were here in 20, and some of us were here a long time. Some of us had lived for a long time. I got to tell you, folks, that election gave me hope. It was awesome. It really was. You see, Democrats were hopeful, working together, people celebrating new type of voters together, a staff helping people. People have a good time, though. I say, you know, poll watchers make us better. I've said that before. We'll get this thing right on number two. But I thought it was a wonderful election. It went very smoothly. I want to thank Norm and his staff. You'll stand up, please. What a job you did. Mr. Skinner and his staff, my team, and that's dinner. The spread is all those guys. I mean, we sit up here to do all this, and they're doing the work. Y'all have no idea what all it takes. Maybe some of you do. You see it. And they do a great job. And thank you all, everybody, for the great election. Thank you very much.
I'd like that. You said 2020 was a lot of intervention, a lot of upset people, even the people that were voting were. I didn't see that this time. Everything went very smoothly. My phone hardly rang, which was a really, really good sign. Again, thank you, everyone, that, and your staff, everybody. Wonderful.
And answer the chair, he's got my number. But again, I'd like to echo that. Well, certainly, I had several phone calls that I made to the staff during the process. It's never put on hold too long. Everybody was always so helpful. And to this board for being minded and making sure that we ensure a fair and accurate election. At this point, we're at public comments, if any, having time to speak to other comments.
I'm going to have a second chance, because it's rare that that guy has stand-up interviews. I like him. Really, we take that opportunity to agree with him on the accessibility. I think that's a, that's a my partisan kind of issue that we want to make sure all our voters have accessible way to get in, and particularly in the naked event of Risc Church, one that has been voiced by a number of voters because of the, it's not just where the parking is, but it's in the distance from there. But when they moved into their fellowship hall area, to be able to go down in, like, on the dirt and so forth, it's so steep there that I actually had voters say that I don't go there. I go to early voting because I can get in there and out of there very easily. I haven't seen a problem in Lydell. That's my first thing. I think there is a way around on the building. Maybe they didn't see it. And maybe that needs to be marked where they can get in and around. But for those kind of locations, particularly at that one place, it seems to be very difficult for handicapped voters to be able to get in and out of. Thank you for the...
I just wanted to say also, thank you for all your hard work, and especially the kindness of the staff and the transparency, the appropriate boundaries they have, but also the transparencies to the public. So, that would have been a lot and a lot, and transparency really brings trust, reports trust.
So that would have been a lot, and transparency really brings trust, it brings trust. And then also, just thank you for your vote for tabulator two, and just some additional information, I think, you'll find pertinent also, was that it was clean somewhere very early voting. As a measure to stop the number of misfees, and there continue to be misfees, we had asked for it to be cleaned again, I don't know if that happened or not, but we did continue to observe them. So, we thought that was information on those, well.
I just wanted to add, to while we are looking at the polling places, the polling site that is the Boys and Girls Club, EM two, I think it's EM two, I think that's mine, but I voted early. But it is, as far as accessibility, that it's a problem, and for someone that's showing drive, yeah, for someone in a wheelchair, they can make it in because they have a paved area there. But for someone of a walker, there are curves, and then there's a long distance as well. So y'all could kind of look at that as well. I'm going to mention that same one, on the election day, I visited several of the polling places. That was one of the things that I noticed, when I went to that particular one, it was after dark, and I didn't know where the polling place was located, and the signage was not there. And I thought, because the school doesn't allow signage or what, but it was dark. And I had to ask, there were some kids playing on the lawn in front of the school, and I was asking where the polling place was. And they pointed me, because I didn't know where the airport was, and so, it was just dark, but they had distance and all that. But that's already been addressed, and I think it still needs to address, the signage, because people that live over there, I guess, they know where to go. But I had no idea. We didn't, so that's that. But then, once you get, once you get inside, I want to echo what everybody has said about the kindness of all the people who were working, and the knowledge that they have and what they're supposed to do, you know, so... And just the professionalism that I saw everywhere that I dropped in. And we, my team made a lot of demands on the staff, and everything that we asked was accomplished. And so, you know, in the middle of everything that was going on, they made sure that anything we asked was done, thank you. And thank you, Norm, and everyone else that, that was called. And all in all, you know, although I'm not saying that I'm not happy with the results, I'm happy with the process. And I have no qualms about saying that, you know, I feel good about how the process took place, and people working together, you know, the public can reflect a lot. And so I just wanted to meet and get to them, and, 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 and to the board, and everyone.
I've always known, and what we're doing, you're sure, you see, what happened at the block, at thirty, at the poll, during what he was doing, that, that, the board, the board is out there.
I worked about before poll, and I have a couple suggestions. One is, I think the people observing the polls, if you have some kind of meat tag to identify them on. If it's not there, which one it got before them on? I know, I'm playing. And the second thing, I didn't like the ballot, I don't know if you have any control of the ballot. Who does that? The state?
Yeah.
See, in my opinion, I wouldn't have put the presidential election first, because actually, in my opinion, it's the local elections that affect you more on a day-to-day basis than who's the president. And there were a lot of people that didn't even know anything about the other parts of the ballot. And they just, they were asking me, I don't, I don't know this, I said, well, just leave a blank, but that's the wrong answer. And you need to know what the other initiatives are that are on the ballot, they're just not entered. And so they voted for the president, and then what left? I think that's disappointing. Thank you.